Let's call this meeting to order. It's all three. Roll call, please, Chris.
Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bowe.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here.
Commissioner Tammy.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
We approve the agenda.
We do have one now. You have a 2A. We need to move that to 7C. I'll make a motion to have 2A go to 7C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience tonight that would like to address the commission? Not seeing any, let's move on. In terms of updates, Commissioner Heidemann and I attended the Michigan Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Lansing. I distributed a summary of the position that our association has taken on major issues affecting counties across the state. Howard, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
We had a meeting with Representative Powers at our legislative breakfast and discussed essentially the challenges they're faced with the budget this year. I think maybe to sum up what he was suggesting is they don't know how big of a hole that Flint water thing is going to be for the state. And they're definitely looking at some challenges too with the Detroit public schools. They're looking at maybe 700 million for Detroit, but he didn't seem too concerned about that. But the unknown, the big unknown is what the Flint situation is going to cost. So, the big point, I guess, for us is that the governor's budget that was sent through the legislature has full revenue sharing for counties. So, from that standpoint, that part looks good. I think that was the big thing. David?
Just one question. What's your initial feeling about the dark stores?
The dark stores. David, last name for the representative working on that. Anyway, he is a former assessor and has been for a number of years. And he's been given the responsibility in the House to develop that. And they think it's going to move through. And those were the four points in here were the items that he is addressing in his bill with the dark stores. So, yeah, I think we're pretty, or at least there's some optimism on part of that, that those, all of those things are going to be in.
Mr. Greathop.
I'm just looking at some of these items in here. You know, the dark stores, stopping unfunded mandates, treating of 17-year-olds as juveniles. Those are very, very expensive items for us in one form or another. And I think we need to do whatever we can to keep supporting MAC, to keep fighting these things. We can't do it on our own, but we certainly need people like that to do it. But, you know, the juveniles alone, I mean, you're talking two to four million dollars. The unfunded mandates, every time you turn around and something comes down and they tell you to do it. And those are costly. And the dark stores, if that comes to some kind of fruition, we're going to be in a lot better shape because of what we're losing there.
The treatment of 17-year-olds as juveniles was one of the main points that was brought up in one of the sessions with Mike Winley, our captain. He was there at the station and raised, I thought, some good points. One of his points he made, and you were addressing that just now, and that is if they do decide to go that direction and move that age up to 18, have they put in place anything to deal with the 17-year-olds that might be coming on? In other words, are you just going to drop it on us and say, oh, guess what? Because that's all part of that child care fund.
I've had a couple of those conversations, and I know they're going to save a ton of money themselves. And are they going to pass it down to us? Or are they going to make us bite the bullet for it? And if you're talking two to four million in St. Clair County, what are you talking with the rest of the counties? I mean, you're talking a huge chunk of money statewide. So, I'm just glad you guys were there, and I hope that this stuff keeps moving.
I thought Prosecutor Winley did an outstanding job. Don't you?
Yes. He was one of the three panelists that spoke about it. He was representing the Prosecutors Association of Michigan.
Were you two guys in the front row?
Yeah, we were there.
Were you in the front row?
He was worried about the vegetables we were carrying. No, but he did an excellent job. And it was a very heavily attended session because it affects every county in the state. And Mr. Greathop, going back to your other comment about unfunded mandates, if you go to the last page on this handout, I thought one of the interesting things is in the right column where they talk about the percentage of our budget that are state mandates and the percent of the budget that we get from revenue sharing. Those, the income and the expenses don't really align themselves too well. And as we all know, it's been going the wrong direction for a while. I guess without going into this in a great amount of detail, I know most of us have been participating in the legislative lunches that we have quarterly. We've had discussions about these. But I think one of my biggest takeaways from the conference was, you know, MAC is pursuing a lot of these issues in a manner that's very consistent with our philosophy. And if we want to be successful, they need us as individual commissioners to contribute to their PAC. Commissioner Heidemann and I have both made a contribution to their PAC, and I would ask that you consider that. Because what those funds are really used for is for MAC staff to be able to go to fundraisers and, you know, establish personal connections with the various legislators and the key staff. And I thought that was important, and they did a really good job of promoting that.
Excellent job. I would like your comment on the revenue sharing part because it pertains to county government. Because the more that I've been in this county government, the more I begin to realize a lot of people in the community simply do not understand how it operates. And just as one example, the court system. The state determines to pay for the judges. We get all the other bills, even though all of the courts are state courts. They're not county courts, you know, probate, district, and circuit. So, I was particularly impressed with the Chief Justice giving a presentation before us. I thought he did an outstanding job and really liked, I liked what he had to say about how they were restructuring the state courts. And instead of having probate, have a chief judge, district court have a chief judge, and circuit, just one chief judge over all of them working together with the courts. And from what I've seen in St. Clair County, our judges have been doing an outstanding job of managing that work. Is that your take on it?
Yes, sir. So, are there any other updates commissioners would like to share this evening? If not, let's move on to conceptual initiatives. Gossman? We have no old business. Our first new business item, 7A, is the library board appointment. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move this on to the full board, all three names, William Fritz, Daniel Lockwood, and Patrick Minnick. I'd like to move all three of those to the full board for consideration at that time.
Support.
Thank you. I was wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea for us to invite each of them to come to that meeting and address us about their interest in the board.
I think it'd be a good idea. I see Allison in the audience. If you want to do it, or if you want us to do it?
Why don't you do that for us?
All right. Yeah, invite them if they'd like to come and talk to us.
We want to let them know that we're very interested in hearing from them if they're interested in attending.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item is a proclamation concerning National Walking Day.
Make the motion.
Board.
Motion is to move the proclamation on National Walking Day to the full board agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, we're at 7C, which was the addition that we added to the agenda earlier. This is the community mental health board appointments.
Do we have anything on that? I don't have anything.
It was, there wasn't any on it this morning when I looked, but tonight, as I'm looking at my agenda, there is an item there. Because it was initially on our list here as item 2A, you might want to look at that point in your agenda. It's showing up on my iPad now. It wasn't there this morning, but it is there now. And the request is to, first, Mr. Richard Ames of Marine City. His appointment expires March 31st, 2016. His reappointment would, proposed reappointment would be extended to March 31st, 2019. There's a vacancy for a member at large. It was previously Veronica Jarrow of Algonac. So...
I got that letter. She lives in my area, and I got a letter from her on that effect, so...
And then Vicki Locke is from East China. She's finishing her first term on the board, and the request here is to have her reappointed till March 31st, 2019. And finally, Ed Reeves of Kimball Township, to reappoint him till March 31st, 2019.
I'd make the motion for the reappointments.
Support.
These reappointments would be sent on to the full board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any other human service items to come before the commission this evening? Hearing none. We have, under information only, the St. Clair County Health Department February 2016 points of interest.
Move to receive and file the information only.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to call to order, please, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee Meeting. Clerk would take the role, please.
Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Tammy.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bowe.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greathop.
Here. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, then I'm open for a motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting? You see three guys in suits out there I don't recognize. Did you guys want to address them? Right? Updates, judiciary and public safety? No commission, no conceptual initiatives? There's no old business? Under new business, State of Corrections, Sheriff Donlan, who would take the seat of honor up front there and take over.
All right. Well, good afternoon, commissioners. What I have is three sections, and I'm going to do just section number one tonight, state of the, basically, state of the sheriff's office. Three overviews. Today is going to be corrections. We start with corrections because it's our largest budget as our most employees. After that, next week, we'll do the uniform services, drug task force, and then we'll finish up with Marine Division Dive Team together and animal control attached. So, we'll have three presentations, all very similar. I've got about 20 slides. I'll zip through this as quick as we can, and hopefully I can answer any questions any of the commissioners has when we're finished. So, a little bit, I have our mission statement up there. I'm not going to read it, but I did highlight a little bit of it that really hits home with us. And it's really to safely, securely, mainly detain persons, arrest them. Additionally, on the very bottom, assist our offenders in becoming law-abiding citizens while providing a safe and healthy work environment, staff. You know, we have a saying that going to jail is punishment. Being in jail is not supposed to be punishment. And that's a philosophy that we live by in our intervention detention center. A little bit on our jail population, 70% are local people. They're our friends, our neighbors, our kids. It's our locals. The 30% after that are our federal inmates. So, with that in mind, we have a direct supervising facility. And what that is, is direct supervision means the deputy is in the pod with the inmate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, it's a direct supervision run corrections facility with seven pods. And again, programming, that is our main tool, what we use with our inmates to cut down on their recidivism. And again, we really hit that the 70% are our locals, and we're really obligated to return people better than when they arrived in jail. How we do it, and we've got a number of ways, how we do the recidivism, how we treat it. We have our RSAT program, our residential substance abuse treatment. We're going to touch on all of these as I go on. We have a concentration, which we have our charter high school in our jail, and we have our community partners. I'm going to touch on all of these as we go along. And again, when you think of the inmate programming and all of our RSATs and everything else, it's all covered through our commissary. So, a lot of people don't understand, when you buy a candy bar, or you make a phone call, or any of the things within the jail, all those funds go back to the inmates. You can't sell candy bars to inmates and buy bullets, or tires, or gasoline. It has to go back to corrections. So, that's where a lot of the funding comes from. So, it's really a, yes?
I have a question. You mentioned education here. I don't know if it's in there. But how many individuals incarcerated have completed their GEDs today?
Got a couple of slides on it as we go. Yep, we're going to touch on that. Now, we're going to start with our RSAT program, and this had 253 inmates last year enrolled in it. We have an 84% completion. So, if we can get them in there, we do pretty well graduating them through the RSAT program. One of the keys is that this is how we track our recidivism, is if you go back to jail within a year. Now, jails have different ways to track it. The state of Michigan tracks recidivism different than I do. But that's how we do it. About 18% of the failure rate that return in a year, those are the two groups that do it. Right there are the felony drunk drivers and the straddle offenders. Now, felony drunk drivers, we're talking about people that have had six, seven, eight, nine arrests for drunk driving, hardcore alcoholics. We put them in RSAT, they tend to fail. When somebody's been arrested five, six, seven times, it's very hard to have them stop that behavior. The straddle cell offender is an offender that is just like it sounds. They're right on the straddle whether they should go to prison or whether they should go to county jail. And as prisons make more cuts, and the state of Michigan makes more cuts, the restrictions to get into prison are more difficult. So, people that would go to prison, go to county jail. And people that would go to county, a lot of times, go to diversion. So, when you see a straddle cell, that's a hardcore offender, and they tend to fail more. Probably shouldn't have been in the county jail to start with. Now, the key on this is that when you complete RSAT, you end up getting released from jail early. A lot of times, that's court mandated by the judges. And a lot of times, what we'll do is you'll do phase one, maybe phase two. There's three phases. It takes a couple of months to get through it. Once you complete a couple of phases, a lot of times, the judge will allow you into the Huron House. And we run our RSAT in the same conjunction with the Huron House. So, if you finish phase two, we start phase three the same time they start, so it's in phase three. So, you can go from county jail to the Huron House. Now, also, in the Huron House, if you're not behaving, you can go back from the Huron House and be returned to county jail. So, it goes both ways with the Huron House. But when you look at it, we've had 13,568 days of inmates that were released from jail. That's a big number. And those are the inmates that have completed it, were released early. At $60 a day, which is our cost, that's a large number. And take the money out of it, there's 253 people that are much better equipped when they get on the outside. Now, our education, Howard, like you were asking about, we have the only charter-based high school out of the 82 county jails. There's 83 counties, and there's one county has no jail. 82 of us have jails. We're the only one with the charter high school. Great program. 31 GEDs in 13. It goes down to nine in 14, and then it goes back up here again in 14 to that number. Now, there's a little bit of a reason for that. The state changed their standard for the GED. It became much more of a high-level thinking with a writing, math, as well as some cross-curriculum elements, science, social studies nationally and across the state. GED numbers went way down. So, we're not unusual on that. But what we did like is that we had two students that actually got diplomas, and we had three in 15. So, there's five that ended up with diplomas. And these are kids that were far enough along in their high school, far enough with credits that we could get them the credits to get their diploma. So, that is something we're very, very, very proud of. Now, on your question, Howard, 452 have got their GEDs out of our intervention detention center. And that's 452 people that are equipped now for employment when they get out of jail. Because the vast majority will never get that GED on the outside. There's some logic to a captive audience. You're not going to the mall, you're not getting high, you're not drinking, you're not skipping class. You're in jail, you're going to go to school. And it works, and I've seen it. I've known people that have got GEDs in our facility where their parents have struggled with them, trying to get them into alternative schools, trying to get them to walk the line, and just not having success. Once we get them locked up, if you can get them in the program, they pass. So, we're very, very, very proud of our education component. Now, this is the TAP score coming in here for a couple of our educators. The average, there's two grades they jump when they end up going through our GED program. Two grades in reading and two in math. So, that's a big achievement for our organization, I believe. Mr. Greathop, you're on the board.
I am.
Yep. That answers your questions?
Well, just a key point there. They're typically incarcerated for less than a year.
Correct.
And so, to go up two grade levels in less than a year is pretty remarkable in both reading and math because they're accomplishing a lot in a very short time.
Absolutely. And, you know, what we find is a lot of those students have the skills. They just are not in the environment on the outside. So, when they get into an environment inside where they're, you know, forced to cooperate, and they're not out at night, and they're not using drugs and alcohol, they can jump. I mean, they have the intelligence. They don't have the structure to get them up in the morning to go to school. It's a bigger issue, but when we have them in jail, it definitely works. We've got outstanding teachers, outstanding educators in our building. Community partners, we've got many of them. Community mental health, our mental health corps, which is a tremendous success that we partner with. Our medical staff, Huron, Lake Huron, which is the former Mercy Hospital, Catholic Social Services, 20 spiritual organizations, and those are run by Tom Seppel. And when you think of the programming, and I don't list them on here, but we've got everything you could ever think of. You know, we have AA, we have NA, we have CA, we have disease prevention, we have CMH screening, domestic violence for males, domestic violence for females. We've got every kind of programming to put somebody in that has that sort of issue. And it works. Budget overview, jail revenue. We made back 26.8% of our budget, 2.8 million. The majority of that is on federal inmates, and we're going to dig into this a little bit deeper as we go here. Our jail budget was 10.6 million for just our corrections last year. We came in at 10.7, so we were 1% over. And as my friend Bob Kemp would tell us, that budgets are a best guess. They're not perfect science. And we hold to that. We're pretty pleased with that. Couple of things to note on here when you look at that Huron House, there's 100,000 of our budget goes there, and we're fine with that. That's a great partnership. But that's part of the money going out the door. We also had 36,000, and this is disturbing, that were housing inmates out of county. Now, what happened is, is there's a national trend right now of violent female offenders. We're seeing that in all the county jails and all across the country. If you look at St. Clair County, the last several murderers are females, women and children. So, it's a nationwide trend. With that, we have seven pods. We have one female pod. Last summer, our female pod was overpopulated. We were housing females out of county and paying rent. So, you know, it kind of stings when we have this state-of-the-art, beautiful jail, but we have to pay rent to someone else. But that is a huge problem with females when we're not alone. One of the other problems in addition to paying rent is that when you send a inmate off to another jail, they don't have the programming that we offer. So, they're just doing time. And, you know, you're really not helping someone if they're just doing time. We're trying to give them treatment. But that is one of the nationwide issues we have with females. And today, I think we have 71 females. We haven't had a female fed in, well, six, eight months probably, at least. Yeah, we refuse them because we have to keep our own, and we're rightful every day with females. So, it's an issue that we're dealing with. A little more on our revenue when you look at it the last several years. And I'm going to explain what each of these are. A fed inmate, we have fed housing. A fed inmate is a marshal inmate. So, there's three types of federal inmates. And a marshal inmate is an inmate that is waiting to go to trial or waiting to be sentenced. So, they're not already sentenced, or they'd be up in Mylan. They're waiting, and we're in a good location because most of them are in court in downtown Detroit. So, that's one of the reasons. The second are the ICE, and those are the illegal immigration custom enforcement. Those are the illegals, and they're detainees. They're not even considered an inmate by the government. They're a detainee. They're being detained until they can be sent back to where they came from. And they have entirely different set of standards that we have to practice. The third are Federal Bureau of Prisons. And what that is, is that's a real small number. If you're, let's say, a federal inmate, and you did five years in Mylan, and then you're enrolled, and you're in a halfway house. If you violate the terms of that halfway house or three-quarter house, instead of going back to Mylan, they flip them over to a county jail, and they pick a county jail that already has a contract because they know we have the standards. So, the Federal Bureau of Prison basically piggybacks five to 10 inmates on our contract. So, that's what those guys are. They were out, they're getting their hands slapped, and then they're going to go back to their halfway house. And they're all out of Detroit. We pick them up.
Where's that? That first group seems to be the one that has dropped the most in the population. Where are they being housed? Because I'm sure they're still out there somewhere.
Well, it's interesting. When it comes to a federal inmate, it's a much lower threshold than an ICE inmate. So, basically, any jail in Michigan that has room can house a fed. And it's lucrative, as you can see. We made 2.8 million. So, a lot of competition, a lot of jails have built conditions, and, you know, it's basically a fight between sheriffs trying to get your inmates and keep them. On the upside, though, and answer your question, they're all over the place. A lot of them are in San Juan County. My good friend Sheriff Finicky's got a bunch of ours. But ICE inmates are detainees, like we said. And there's only four jails in Michigan that are qualified to hold them because they can't pass the rigid standards. So, we've got a fair amount of ICE, so that continues to go up as the feds go in other directions. They're split up between all kinds of jails. That answers your question.
They opened, Mylan opened up another pod or something, or somebody came online? Was that, is that true? Or is that a legend? Or is it just, is it the increase in everybody getting into the fed business?
It's the increase of everybody getting into the fed business. Now, you will see some upticks on the ICE inmates, and they go up and down. And I've got some graphs I'll show you. But interesting enough with the ICE inmates, we really started to peak last fall, and we're continuing on an uptick. And a lot of that has national decisions that are made, you know, immigration decisions. Depending on who's in office next year will make a difference on that. Depending on who's in office next year will make a difference on, on that ICE inmates. If it's a candidate that is looking to deport, our numbers are gonna go up. If it's a candidate looking to, to keep and, and house, they're not gonna go up. So a lot of those are big, big decisions that are made in DC that trickle down to St. Clair County. But the feds, there's more people in the business. You know, those that have room, it's much smarter to use a marshal than to, to house another county. Because you're only gonna get thirty, forty, fifty dollars if you rent a local. When we were over capacity, we'd have to send our locals out. And every day, when you look on websites, you'll see sheriffs advertising open bed space, and it's competitive, but it's about thirty-five dollars a day. Where a fed, ours is about eighty-four.
Go to eBay and, and feel.
And they undercut each other. It's, it's, it's amazing, but everybody is, you know, they're watching their first chance. That shows some of the revenue on the fed ICE and Bureau of Prison from eleven all the way through here. And that's basically our two point eight there. And that, I guess, so now you understand what the three types of federal inmates, because we talk a lot about feds, but there are three distinct different types of feds. And we have some miscellaneous revenue that I have on here too, and I'll show you. Our telephone service, now that's dropped a lot. If you see here, we're down to one thirty-three. What happened is, the FCC changed the statute, and they capped how much you can charge for phones. And it was a terrible, terrible misjustice to do that. The thought was, is inmates were getting gouged, trying to call home. The problem is, is that revenue goes right back to programming for inmates. So when they don't make phones, they don't have programming, because that's what pays for it. So that was, that was a terrible mistake that was done on a national level. Michigan Department of Corrections, of course, those are our state inmates. Inmate lodging, that's when we have our local inmates that we're seeking reimbursement from. Our Social Security Initiative, booking fees, our work passers. Those are people that are, let's say, employed at A, B, or C factory in St. Clair County, and they go off to work every day. And then we get a, a percentage of that based on their income. So there's a number of our programs here, but that totals out to two point eight for our miscellaneous revenue. So if you have any questions on what those mean, that's all of the other things that they do for revenue here. A little more on the breakdown, this'll show you the averages, and again, you know, they, they fluctuate, and they go all over the board. Because you really have no control over those federal inmates. But twenty thirteen, we, we targeted one thirty-four, we were hoping for it, but they just, you know, they don't arrive necessarily. Average for fourteen ninety-seven, we targeted one twenty-two. Twenty fifteen was a, was a tough year. A lot of people got in the business, and then there just weren't feds to be had out there. So we had a low number, we thought we'd hit about one-ten. We adjusted down a lot for next year, which is interesting, we dropped it to fifty-six. But right now, we're averaging a hundred and eighteen. So I mean, there's, there's not a lot of rhyme or reason, but like I said earlier, the hundred and eighteen is because of the immigration inmates. They really started climbing about September of last year, and continuing to climb, where we're pretty much full right now. And I, I, I can't really tell you why more illegals are being brought in, deported. It's, it's just what's going on right now, and it's a national policy decision. We'll see how it continues next year. But it, it appears at sixteen, we're gonna have a good year at this point, early on anyhow. We're way high, but again, they change. And if you look at a, yes?
Just looking at your graph that you got right there.
Yep.
And I see you're forecasting fifty-six for two thousand sixteen, which will directly affect your budget and the numbers that you come up with. But if you're forecasting fifty-six, I'm only showing four months in these four years that you're giving us, that you're fifty-six or below. You had two thousand thirteen, where you had three months below, you had thirty-nine or forty that one time. And possibly in two thousand fifteen, where you had about, it looks like fifty or so. So four or five months total, you only had over four, five years, for a four-year span, you're only below fifty-six, so.
Dropped significant last year, the, the problem.
Very conservative, but I know that's how you're gonna potentially draft your budget on it.
Right. The, the problem is, if we go too high, and then we don't hit it, that money's gotta come from somewhere else. Because this is a revenue that's expected to come. So I prefer to be conservative in it, because again, there's no rhyme or reason to this. There's sheriffs that will drive down to Wayne County for free, and sit outside the Wayne County courthouse and transport back for free, so they can house them. And that's, I mean, it's hard to compete with that sort of thing. So there's, there's a little politics that goes into that. But yeah, we have a low number for sixteen. You know, we may be higher, it may drop off tomorrow, you just don't know. But at this point, it's doing well, but it comes to a certain point where you just don't have room for them anyhow. You know, we, we have four hundred and ninety-one bed jail. And I can tell you exactly what we have today, but we had four hundred and seventy, somewhere like that. Industry standard, you should have ten percent open space in a jail. And the reason you want that is you can move inmates. You may have co-defendants that you have to put in different pods, you may have people that hate each other, there's all kinds of reasons you have to move inmates. And when you're completely full, and then they're sleeping on the floor, it gets it very difficult, so.
Well, the reason I'm asking you, of course, when you get your budget, because you got your budget, but we'll be looking at it, so. That's why I'm asking the question.
Well, I will tell you, if we end up way over our number, I'm gonna be coming back asking for some of that, so just fair warning. Don't, don't think I don't want some of that money.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when that jail first opened, it was like four oh six or four oh eight was the number?
Right, we moved beds up, yep. We've, we had the state come in and remeasure, and we've added bunks, and we're about as tight as we can be now. In fact, Captain Bliss and I talked about that this week, wondering if we could remeasure, have the state remeasure, add some female beds, but there's nowhere to put them. There's, you know, we're, we're maxed, and we have females on the floor, unfortunately. But four ninety-one is, you know, we, we might, you know, be able to throw a couple in the male pods.
Is that right, though, four oh eight, four oh six?
It was real close to there, right. Yeah, we picked up a lot of bed space since that time, but we're, we're full, like you said. But that gives you a look at, at our numbers fluctuating. Now, the one thing in thirteen, if you guys remember, thirteen, we were so full, we sent feds back. So there's a big drop, we were totally over capacity. That was right in the heart of the summer, June, July, and August, busy, busy time for us. We were at such an uptick, we had nowhere to put them. And it was a painful decision to send back fed inmates, and the feds were not happy about that, but nowhere to put them. Our obligation is to our local inmates, first and foremost, and we have to have places to put them. So that was where you saw that big peak and the big drop. We haven't sent anybody back since thirteen. We refused females, but we pick it up on the males. So it, it evens out that way. Price of labor, a little bit on our labor as well. We have roughly fifty inmates that work throughout the jail. We have them preparing meals, we do fifteen hundred meals a day. We've got about eighteen inmates that cook, we've got inmates in our laundry, we've got them in our commissary, we have them at the animal control. Four males, usually two females at animal control, we have them assigned to our custodians. So they're all over our building doing jobs. And part of the way we get our food contract is we provide the labor, because we've got a labor source. And if you are an inmate, and you're working, you're not billed to stay in the jail. So you get a pass as far as a financial hit, when you get out of jail, the sixty dollars a day, you don't have to pay if you work. But when you think about that, if you take these seventy thousand man-hours, and conservatively, if we hired fifty part-time employees, because that's what we would need, at minimum wage, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's a very, very conservative number. I, I don't know that we'd be paying minimum wage, we'd have to be at minimum fifty people. And the trustees work seven days a week, particularly in the kitchen. You know, there's no days off where we don't feed people. So if you're a cook, you work a lot. So that's, you know, kinda one of those things that people don't think about. And I will note, that's animal control, and it is spotless, if you wanna take a look at that picture right there.
They don't get any vacation pay.
No vacation pay, no, no. Our current jail staff, we're a hundred and eighteen, full-time correction staff, seventy-nine are command officers, lieutenant sergeants, our part-time transport officers. Those are retirees that run our inmates, our laundry workers, and our support staff, again, our programmers, a hundred and eighteen employees. All but one percent of them are local residents of St. Clair County. So they're our, our constituents, our neighbors, our friends, our relatives. Some of our milestones, we have a new jail management system coming in through Cower XRM, so we're gonna do away with the AS400. We're really excited about that, that is a, a big deal for us. We have a new commissary contract through Trinity, and Captain Bliss needs a pat on the back. He handles these contracts, these negotiations, we put these out to many, many vendors. We had Airmark prior for our commissary, and Airmark couldn't compete with Trinity. And Trinity wanted our commissary so bad, because we're the ninth-largest jail in the state, that they helped us with our jail management system. So there was a lot of very good negotiation going on there. We also have a new state-of-the-art video security system. Our jail's ten years old, and technology changes. And that was through the Public Improvement Fund, where Captain Bliss went over and asked in front of that committee for funding for that. More milestones, inmate labor again, a million dollars last year in inmate labor. Our RSAT, which is our residential substance abuse treatment, that are days out of jail. Sixty dollars a day while the inmates released early, they complete the program. And again, eighty-two percent of those don't come back any year, so that's a good program. Corrections budget, we're one percent. And, you know, when you're one percent on a ten point six million dollar budget, that's a good, that's a good thing. Full revenue, two point eight million. Now, these three are bullet points of the whole presentation. And this is stuff that I think really needs to be discussed, that the ICE is a very, very difficult standard to pass. There's only, like I said, four jails in the whole state that are qualified to house federal inmates. Two hundred and sixty-eight pages of standards. What happens is the federal government hires retired wardens from all over the country. And about five of them show up on a Monday, and they stay until Thursday. And they go through our place with a white glove. One may have food, one may have security, one may have key control, one has policy, and they watch your inmates, they talk to your employees, they follow us around for days. And they will flunk you in a quick skinny, and you'll lose your inmates. And they actually pay a lot of attention to the employees to make sure that not only do we have the policy, we are doing the policy. And this is the kinda thing that you can't prepare for two weeks out in the past. Either you live this, or you fail it. And we live it every day, twelve months a year, and it makes us a much better facility. So we're very, very pleased about that. Additionally, the second bullet point, it was almost as if they announced, if you got audited by the IRS. I don't know how, but we got picked, and it's done every four to five years, so they came back and gave us another in-depth inspection, we passed it with flying colors. But we were just the unlucky draw. Now, the third one, I talked about one in four counties, there's Chippewa, there's Kellum, there's Monroe, and there are us, we're the only four that pass. The other three jails are running on the old standard. The government shifts it in pieces depending on your contract. We are on the most new standards, which is the two thousand eleven standards, okay? So we're the only one in Michigan, the only one in Michigan that has passed that standard, that is, that is huge. Now, across the country, there's two hundred and fifty facilities that house detainees, it's two hundred and fifty. There's only nineteen in the whole country, in the entire United States, that pass that standard, rule one of nineteen, we're the only one in Michigan. So that is something that we are very, very, very proud of at St. Clair County. A little bit looking to our future, continuing to work with our federal government, our partners. Increase our, our, our staffing, keeping our staffing to the industry standards for the safety of our employees. We actually have a lieutenant position, where Lieutenant Mike Green passed away. It's mandated, it's on our manning table, it's unfunded, we're gonna be addressing that this year, hopefully to get that refilled. Uphold our industry standards, and again, we pass our industry standards to the highest levels that the industry has. Inmate programming, again, it's about getting the inmate better prepared when they leave than when they get here. And not every jail does that. Technical efficiencies, you know, jails are very technical places. You know, the days of smashing big rocks and the little rocks, that doesn't happen anymore, at least not in St. Clair County. Always after we're looking at new technologies, whether it's your commissary, kioshs in the cells, where they can buy stuff, or report documents, or realize when they're outdated, or good time. There's all kinds of technology that is changing, continually changing in the corrections world. Maintain our service standards, obviously. And again, our key, cooperation, transparency, and collaboration, and that's what we, we live by every day. So, any questions that I could, I could answer on corrections?
Anybody have anything for the sheriff? Sheriff, we thank you very much, your team looks like they did a great job. Captain Bliss is sitting back there in the audience, just beaming because doing such a good job. And we recognize that.
I, I will tell you, we have the best jail administrators in the state of Michigan. Captain Bliss is recognized state and nationally, he sits on two boards, one for the National Corrections Advisory Board, and also on the Michigan Correctional Advisory Board. So when they look at nationally, all across the United States, they start tapping on jail administrators that sit on boards, he's been tapped. That's a big, that's a big deal for, for our organization. And this is a big, it's a big outfit to run, with almost five hundred inmates, and ten million dollar budget, a hundred and eighteen employees, there's a lot that goes on in there. And we're doing a good job on it.
Thank you again.
Alrighty.
Alright. Okay, moving on to item seven B, public guardian office software purchase request. I see Mike McMillan and Abigail Jenix in the audience. You guys wanna fill us in a little bit, maybe introduce us to Abigail, Mike?
Good evening.
Hello.
So, Abigail Jenix, Abigail began in our office at the end of September. As part of our larger reorganization of the public guardian office in response to some, some issues we had, who brought. For the, for the board on a prior occasion, some client service issues, some, some reporting issues. I'm very pleased to say that a lot of that has come together. And really, what we've, what we're kinda left, left with now is our antiquated software system. We are one of the last four groups on the AS400 system. Department is moving off of it quickly. We're gonna be moving off it as well, hopefully, after, after this implementation. And then the only remaining are the district court and the probate courts, which are in the process of transitioning to the state JAS system. So really, we're kinda the last holdouts on the system, and once that's gone, we can, you know, kiss goodbye to a, to a, a piece of our information technology program that's really outdated. Just very briefly, certainly in the, in the letter that we drafted, kind of outlined some of the benefits of the program, just in a nutshell. The, the, the process improvement that the office is gonna realize is gonna be incredible. Currently, we have a, a, a financial system that is very problematic, it's antiquated. It allows funds to be dispersed out of clients' account when, when there aren't funds there, which does pose quite a, quite a few problems. We have a system that does now allow us to do electronic payments. So in this day and age, to not be able to send electronic payment to tri-hospital EMS or, or DTE, we're literally cutting, was it five hundred checks?
Approximately a thousand a month.
So this, this system will allow us to do electronic payments, also will, will simplify the check process. Because we, basically, the public guardian is, is the, is the payer of all the clients' bills. We have approximately three hundred and seventy-five clients, we pay their rent, their light bill, every, every bill that they have. And so it's, it's quite a, quite a undertaking. This new system will allow us to have access to information while out in the field. It will allow us to have electronic case notes, will allow the office to transition to a paperless system, so no more files. Really, it's something that is gonna be impressive, and it's gonna cut down a lot of the time spent doing the menial things, and allow our caseworkers to get out into the field. I know Molly in the treasures office, and Danielle in the administration office spend a good amount of time reconciling accounts, and, and really, you know, dealing with our, our issues. This new system will allow, allow them to, you know, basically run reports, and, and will allow them to spend their time doing other things than the public guardian office stuff, so.
Do you wanna add, Abigail?
Yeah, just a couple of things. What, what I think is most significant about this change is, when I came into the office, there really was no official case management process at all. The notes that are taken when case managers meet with clients may or may not have been put in a paper file. Right now, we're attempting to keep the office updated by sending emails. So what that means is that the only way that we have right now to let anyone else in the office know about a phone conversation that's taken place, or a meeting that we've had with a client, is to send an email to everyone. If then, we need to talk to the hospital, for instance, about what we discussed with a client, we have to search through our email to find the notes that were taken in order to share that information or to make decisions. The other thing that I think is really important is... The other thing that I think is really important is that someone from our office, one case manager, is on call twenty-four seven. Someone needs to have access to that information at all times, and right now, we don't. If a hospital calls and says, is this person a DNR? We don't know unless we've been anticipating that question and someone has made sure to put it in an email. Here's a perfect example of something that will change and never be a problem again. Last week, when I was on call, I had a landlord call me at ten thirty and say, can you please call your client and tell her to turn her music down? She's had several complaints. And I said, no, I can't because I don't have her phone number. Because I didn't anticipate that problem and I wasn't at the office to access our system to have our information. This is going to completely change that and make our jobs much easier and, and cut down on a lot of wasted time. We're going to be much more efficient.
I'd make the motion.
Support? Okay, motion and support. I know I've already talked to Mike. The seventeen-nine is already earmarked and thirty-eight-hundred for the annual is in his budget and will be from then on. Any other questions for either Abigail or for Mike? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mike, Abigail, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, this is going to go on to the full board.
Thank you.
Item seven C, two thousand and fifteen Homeland Security Interlocal Funding Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved those agreements to be sent on to the full board.
Support? Okay, I have a motion and two supports. Are there any questions about this? Looking at the figures, you can see it's steadily dropping. I did take time to send each of you a list of all of the programs that this money is going to pay for and spend. So you had that information.
There's no match for any of these grants, correct?
Correct. Anything else? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any other judicial, public, judiciary and public safety matters come before the board tonight? Any? Not? Any information? Other information?
Make motion to receive and file packets.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Move that we adjourn.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee meeting to order. Commissioner McCallum, Commissioner Toney.
Here.
Commissioner Bone.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitow.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
At this time, do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I see we have one, two A. I'd like to move that down to seven E.
Close pipeline.
Support?
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would entertain a, a motion at this time to approve the agenda as amended.
So move. Support?
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close line. Do we have any citizens wishing to address any environmental and public works matters? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. The Smart Cities Challenge Grant, David is on his way up already. This is an exciting program.
Before Dave starts, I just want to chime in on this because I've got to give some credit to a couple individuals. I received a call one day from Joe Fricken. He's actually a Marysville kid. When I say kid, he's about my age, so I guess kid to you guys. But he was talking about connected cities and some of these things. And me being a non-technical person, I just happened to be walking into a meeting that had Dave Struck as part of it and Bill Kaufman, Dan Casey, you know, handful of people. And they were talking about this potential grant that was coming. And really just put them in touch with Dave. I know you're going to obviously give us a little update, but I'm on kind of way of the future. What's your thoughts about the whole program? Give some, give some overview on it, so.
Sure. Well, good evening, commissioners, and I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible. This project was, was quite interesting to work on, certainly different than, you know, the normal planning and zoning type projects that we get to work on. So it was kind of a refreshing change and definitely learned a lot in the process. And, you know, normally, as Commissioner Bone said, this is a project that kind of came, came along late in the game. We had just over two weeks to put this, this thing together. Normally, you know, if somebody comes to you and tells you, do you have a, a two-week window to put a grant together? Your first inclination is going to be, you know, it can't happen. And especially a project of this scope and, and magnitude. So, you know, it was really quite impressive how, how it came together, working with a number of different entities, including the private sector. You know, it was really pretty amazing that we were able to pull everything together. And I just wanted to highlight this. In the, the corner of the slide there, you see a report called Beyond Traffic 2045. This is a report that the US DOT put together in late two thousand and fourteen. It's about a three hundred and fifty-page report that basically outlines all of the trends in today's transportation system and identifies what's going on for the future, where we need to get to in terms of United States infrastructure. And as you might imagine, we're quite a far away from being where we need to be. So, an overarching goal of this whole Smart City Challenge was that the applications really needed to speak to what was in this Beyond Traffic Report. So the first thing we had to do was pour through this, this huge document and pull out buzzwords and some of the, the key trends that are going on. So we were able to do that in a pretty quick manner. You may have read the article that was in the Times-Herald about the grant application. Those are a nice summary of what we put together. Again, we applied for this on February fourth. There's actually going to be a pretty quick turnaround as far as finding out whether or not Port Huron and Marysville are going to be selected as one of the five finalists. That's important to note is that there is going to be five finalist cities that win one hundred thousand dollars for the Smart City Challenge. With that one hundred thousand dollars, you then have about three or four months to put together a more in-depth plan for implementing this grand vision for becoming a smart city. Out of those five finalists, there's going to be one Smart City Challenge winner that can receive up to fifty million dollars in terms of a grand prize. Forty million of that is going to come from US DOT. I know ten million is going to come from an organization called Volke. Actually owned by one of the part owners of Microsoft. And that ten million is really focused on electrical vehicles and the electric grid and how that brings in smart city infrastructure. The announcement is actually going to be made on March twelfth at the South by Southwest Festival in Austin. So normally, that's a festival that focuses on indie music and art, but they're also going to announce these five finalists. So I know that all of the mayors from every city that applied for the Smart City Challenge are being invited down to Austin to take part in the event. I don't know yet if the cities of Port Huron and Marysville will be taking the DOT up on that offer, but we shall see. So, as I said, we applied for this on a Thursday. By the weekend, the headlines were already coming out from the feds that they were blown away by the response that they got. So there was ultimately seventy-seven cities that applied. One thing that's important to note is that in the notice of funding that came out, the feds basically identified their ideal smart city to be a city that had a population of two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand people. Obviously, we're behind the eight ball in that regard right off the bat. However, that was not a requirement. That was simply a desired characteristic. So we knew right off the bat that we needed to craft an application that really told a story on why that population threshold doesn't matter. And we need to make the case for why Port Huron and Marysville are a good location to be one of these five cities. And you can see, you know, looking at some of the cities underneath each of the states, there are a number of applications from multi-jurisdiction, you know, cities that didn't necessarily meet the threshold to begin with, much like us. And in Michigan, the only other application actually came from Detroit, which was expected, you know, with everything that's going on with, you know, the big three and with, you may have seen a lot of the activity that's taking place at U of M with M-City, which is a testing facility for autonomous vehicles and driverless cars. So, as I said, we had to make the case why Port Huron and Marysville would be ideal locations. And so what we did is, you know, we made the case that Port Huron and Marysville are really any town USA. I mean, the majority of communities in the United States are not Boston, St. Louis, San Francisco. You know, all of these smaller communities throughout the nation all currently have aging infrastructure, crumbling roads, and now you've got all this new smart infrastructure that's coming online. All of these, these communities are going to be facing these same challenges. So we felt that we made the case that, you know, they need to focus on communities like our communities because that's sort of the real world of what's really going on, you know, that this stuff needs to work in regular towns. Additionally, we thought we had some unique infrastructure that would sort of set us apart as well. Obviously, the international border crossing is a big one, playing up on the fact that emergency management a few years back got St. Clair County identified as a virtual city pilot site by Homeland Security. So there's obvious benefits that come with the Homeland Security angle. Obviously, we have an abundance of transportation infrastructure with the two interstates, the rail tunnel. We've got major shipping routes, freighters, pleasure boats, drawbridges in town. So we were able to lay all that out and show why we would be an ideal location. Additionally, we have a number of suppliers both in the county and then we're located, you know, in a very good location in terms of other automotive suppliers, both in Detroit and in Canada as well. We needed to also identify specific challenges. And I think this is where, as I looked at some of the other applications that were coming out of some of the big cities, they really focused in on, on very sort of micro-centered issues. They were, you know, focusing on simply improving transit. We, we poured through the notice of funding and really tried to hit exactly what they were looking for. And they were looking for sort of a comprehensive, big-picture view at all of this. So these are just some of the challenges that we identified in the application for our two cities. Basically focusing on congestion along the M-25, M-29 corridor, the Blue Water Bridge, obviously. Seasonal congestion with the drawbridges here in Port Huron. Again, that Homeland Security and public safety issue, enhancing connectivity between certain areas. And in particular, we focused on the downtown and the convention center on Port Huron. Engaging citizens, that's, that's one of the huge pieces that the feds are looking for as well. Ultimately, the communities that get selected, they're looking for places that can serve as models. You know, can they take whatever happens in these winning cities and replicate what went on there in other communities? And again, that's why we're trying to tie us as being sort of any town USA. But a big piece of that is engaging citizens to find out what they want in terms of what's coming. What do they even know about what's coming? A lot of what people hear about are simply driverless cars, and that's about it. But as I'm, I'm going to show you in a minute, you know, it's, it's so much bigger than that. And then, of course, economic and environmental impacts of being waterfront communities. Certainly, there's, there's a lot of things that can be learned through all these different challenges. And I'll talk about how we intended to sort of transfer this knowledge in a second. Some of the specific projects we identified as, as solutions to those challenges includes, again, civic engagement. Within that two-week period of time, we were able to get Michigan State University's School of Planning and Construction to sign on. And they are going to undertake an entire civic engagement project in both cities. Another piece would be sensor infrastructure deployment. A huge piece of how all of this technology is going to work is that there's going to be sensors on just about everything that you can think of. And all of these sensors are going to talk to one another. So what we laid out in our plan was simple sensor deployment on traffic lights, bridges, buildings, whatever the case may be, very strategic deployment, to help us look at the data that comes out of it. Again, that's a huge piece of this. We've all heard of the term "big data" getting thrown around in, in recent years. With this whole autonomous vehicle and these sensors, nobody knows exactly how they're going to use this data. And so that's going to be one of the outcomes of this project, to show how the data can be used and how it can be replicated in other places. For our communities, that can, can tell us a lot about our, our efficiency of our tra, our transportation systems. You know, there's certain security implications for stuff coming across the Blue Water Bridge, traveling across our highways. Look at open data and open government in terms of having the information and data available on, on these municipal websites. A bike share pilot project in downtown Port Huron. Looking at connecting that convention center with downtown with a potential autonomous shuttle. So I, you know, at first glance, a lot of this stuff can seem to be very, you know, Jetsons-esque, but this stuff is here now. In fact, you know, working and communicating with some of the private sector partners in this, you know, we hear a lot about Google and what they're doing with driverless cars. That's because Google is a huge machine as far as PR is concerned. But so many companies in our, in the metro Detroit area and elsewhere, they've already got this stuff going. They're testing it. So they need places now to sort of roll this out and, and look at modeling and how it's actually going to work in the real world. So that's just a, a few of the projects there that we laid out. In this application, which when it was all said and done, it was about thirty please, and I'm not going to get into all of these by any stretch. But we had to hit on, on these twelve vision elements within the application. We had to address every single one of these things. And the way that they laid it out is that the, the top row there are basically the highest priority elements. And those are going to be the things like connected vehicles and sensors. The middle section there, the middle six, were the next tier of priorities, looking at how that technology played into other systems going on in the community. And then the bottom section there were sort of the lower priority elements. So again, as I said, at first glance, you know, everything kind of, everybody thinks of driverless vehicles, but it's much more about connectivity. And so what we've got now, we've already got this technology out there where vehicles are talking to one another. You've got the autonomous piece, of course, the driverless piece, but the connectivity is the, the bigger game, so to speak. You know, if you've bought a car, a late-model car in the last couple of years, your car probably already has a lot of the stuff that's on this list. You know, everything now is, is being put into these vehicles to make our lives easier. And I'm sure that we could debate on whether some of this stuff is good or not, but the fact is that a lot of this stuff's already being implemented. And it's not even just in the cars. I mean, now we've got cities that are already implementing smart streetlights. You know, so they're, they light up when they can sense that somebody's coming or a car's coming. You've got, like I said, the traffic signals that'll have signals, you know, it's green if it knows that cars are coming based on the traffic flow. So there's a lot of implications for this connected technology. And how this plays out in a more overall picture, everything now obviously is so tied to smartphones. And again, that connectivity and that instant on-demand aspect of our lives. So now, like I said, you're going to have cars that are talking to the traffic lights. You're going to have sensors potentially located in the pedestrian crosswalks that know when there's somebody walking across the street. So it's, it connects, it communicates with the traffic lights. You're going to have technology on the public transit buses that know based on somebody standing in the corner four blocks away because of what they put in their smartphone, that they need to go pick somebody up. Bus riders will know where buses are located. So all this stuff is going to be connected. You know, we've already got car sharing services like Uber and everything else that you can do with your smartphone, paying for parking, identifying where parking is available before you even get somewhere. The, the big kind of overarching piece of all of this is the Internet of Things, which you've, you may have heard about. It's being talked about a lot more now. And what the Internet of Things really is, is that, you know, right now, as you think of your smartphone being connected to the Internet, well, more and more things that you can purchase are being connected to the Internet every single day. Washers, dryers, refrigerators, I mean, soon, basically, everything's going to be connected. And so that is the future. This is, this stuff is coming to our communities. And so, you know, from a planning perspective, to be able to be involved in something where you're looking at it proactively was, was pretty refreshing. And this is something that all of our local units are going to need to start paying attention to. There's certainly economic development implications for this as well. You know, the five communities that get selected as finalists for this are going to generate a ton of buzz. And with some of this technology that gets implemented on the, as far as the infrastructure, that's going to draw companies and entrepreneurs to those areas, software developers, application developers, to go to those areas that are, are testing that infrastructure so that they can further develop and refine their products. That, that has job creation implications, of course. There's tie-ins to... Um, there's tie-ins to programming at RISA, um, or, or, you know, the Community College. Um, and, and this slide here just kind of shows you, um, you know, another great example of strong collaboration in, that we have here in the county. Um, for, you know, just about two weeks, we had RISA and SC4 in the room. You know, the EDA was, was vital in putting this thing together. Um, like I said, we pulled in Michigan State University, uh, blew out of transit the road commission. A lot of these private sector, uh, auto suppliers, you know, some of these, these are some really impressive companies that submitted letters of support for Port Huron and Marysville's application, stating that they view it as an ideal location to test some of this stuff out. Um, you know, one in particular is Draper Labs, uh, which is located in Cambridge, uh, the Boston area. That's basically a spin-off of MIT. Um, they're essentially one of the, uh, the, the Defense Department's top three vendors. They've been involved in, uh, autonomous projects and, uh, other projects involving the International Space Station. Um, so they've got some real power behind them, uh, some of the other local companies as well. Uh, so there's a real opportunity for, you know, something really good to happen out of this. And that's true whether we get this application or whether we get this grant or not. You know, only five communities are going to get selected. It's, it's ultra-competitive. Um, so that leads us to what we're going to do next with this. And like I said, whether this gets funded or not, this stuff's coming. There's going to be more grants that come down the line that are going to start integrating this technology, um, certain thresholds in funding programs. We need to be aware of those. At the very least, we now have a baseline of information about this infrastructure and, uh, you know, some of the capabilities that we could, uh, potentially implement here in our community. And so, that's a good start. And, um, there's already been discussions as far as how we can explore other partnerships with this. As I mentioned, Detroit put an application together with, uh, a number of private sector companies, uh, some other nonprofits. And, you know, maybe there's an opportunity down the road to latch on to Detroit and what they're doing. Um, there's a lot of activity going on with M-City. And you've probably read recently with, uh, the state's interest in converting, uh, the old Willow Run plant to another test ground. Um, so we need to look into those things, and we need to stay up on what's going on with this type of technology and really understand it and, and have our communities understand what it means for them going forward. So that's all I have. Uh, you know, I can answer any questions you might have on this.
Any questions for Dave? Commissioner, just one. Uh, instead of the mayor, you don't know if they've accepted the invitation to go down there. And it's pretty impressive. I mean, maybe I'm glad I'm old, because who would be saying this? Uh, is anybody from the county going to be going down, representing the county?
They're going to, we're going to know beforehand if the, the, the communities, I'm assuming, that are going to win the awards.
March 12th, the date that somebody needs to be down there, correct?
March 12th, yeah. So it's, it's kind of a big ask to go down there when you don't know for sure what's happening, but, um, we'll see what happens.
Any other questions?
Well, a couple, couple comments I'm going to make here, Howard. One of the things that I think Dave hit on earlier, a lot of this discussion, if we're just filling out this application and we're one and done, don't waste your time to do it, right? This is essentially building out a template for other opportunities. And I think some of the things that really came out was the county's willingness to work with the private sector, which is, which is huge because I, you know, as I said, um, earlier, I personally know Joe Frick and the, uh, project engineer from Ricardo. And it's hard for these guys to go into a lot of other communities and, and get that kind of support. And, um, we have a lot of automotive companies based, uh, Detroit area, and they're looking to go to areas to test out some of their stuff. So, we did a great job as far as putting our best foot forward. I did talk to Rita Hendricks, um, councilwoman down in Marysville. She's actually an engineer for Chrysler that does, you know, a lot of this stuff. This stuff's coming. Um, I think we underestimated how, it, it is how far along it really is. I mean, this driverless car thing, it's, it's happening, okay? And, um, so we at least position ourselves for a future opportunity coming down the road. And I think Dave, working with, you know, all the stakeholders and all the partners is, you know, really, whether we get it or not, but we're definitely in the discussion moving, moving forward, so.
Well, I think something positive has to be said about, uh, the city of Port Huron and Marysville getting together to work on this with you. A real credit to, uh, collaboration between our local governments. Uh, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Good job.
David, thanks.
I'm looking forward to spending fifty million. Okay, uh, next item on the, uh, uh, agenda will be conceptual init- oh, updates from other commissioners. I'm sorry. None? Uh, moving on to conceptual initiatives from administration, none. No old business, new business. The, uh, 2016 survey and remonumentation grant.
Motion to send it on to the full board.
Support. Okay, it's been moved and supported. This is a annual thing that, uh, we get. Uh, it's a little lower this year, though. Uh, but anyway, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Say none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion carried. Uh, the landfill soil borrow, uh, project.
Mr. Chair, I move that, uh, this project be sent on to the full board for their consideration.
Support. It's been moved and supported. We have Matt here with a, a short, uh, explanation.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, just a quick note about the monument, the remonumentation grant. I believe we're about halfway through the county on, on that project. I think about half of the section corners in the county have been replaced and tied in to the system. And I believe we've been doing this for probably a good fifteen years. It's a long, drawn-out thing.
Long as I've been a commissioner.
The funding, the funding across the board throughout the state is down. Um, so we're proportional to more or less everyone else.
I also noticed it was, uh, 2016 budget. We're three months into 2016.
Mm-hmm.
What's new? Uh, but anyway.
Um, real quickly, commissioners, I, I've submitted a, uh, a two-page memorandum and with a, with the drawing attached, uh, for the agenda this evening explaining why I'm here this evening. I've mentioned to, uh, probably a number of you at one time or another, um, that we are what we call dirt poor on the site. Um, we need decent soils to do a number of different things to operate the landfill, to expand new disposal cells, um, to construct liner systems in those cells, to build structural berms, um, as we expand the landfill, to place interim cover over areas of landfill that we're not done filling, but we're going to come back, we're not, we're going to come back to in a number of years. And when we do final capping projects, which we have done, uh, very little to date, um, we need a substantial amount of good clay soils to do all of those things. Um, and we simply don't have it within our two-hundred-and-fifty-four acre footprint. Now, as you're all aware, we own a couple of parcels, uh, adjacent to the landfill footprint. Um, there's a twenty-acre and an eighty-acre parcel to our south and, uh, a recently acquired seventy-two-acre parcel to our east. The twenty-acre parcel is the one that I've targeted to develop as a soil borrow source and for a number of reasons. Uh, it's immediately adjacent to the southern part of the landfill itself, where we will be doing most of our construction in the next five to seven years. Um, so the proximity is very close. Um, we do need to construct a crossing over the, um, Sonoco Oil Pipeline that's there. That's a fairly minor thing to do. Um, we, also because that parcel has a number, a good, a decent amount of wetlands on it. Um, there is a mitigation process that we've already started down the road for. Um, and, and a little word about the overall, um, picture of this and why we're actually doing this instead of importing soils. If we're able to get soils from onsite or very close to onsite to do what we need to do, the cost goes way, way, way down. If we import soils from an outside source, we have to have over-the-road trucks that are legal to travel the roads. They will come in, deposit soils, and then it has to be double-handed by a contractor to get it where it needs to go because those type of trucks can't just put it anywhere. When we're digging out soils onsite, we do it with excavators and off-road haul trucks. And those trucks can go anywhere they need to go and put the soil right where it's needed. So the cost to do that is much lower. And as you can imagine, logistics is a part of this as well. If my borrow source, if I do have an external borrow source and it's three miles down the road, the cost to get that material onsite is going to be much less than if it's thirty miles. So those things play in fact into, uh, this. The twenty-acre, um, parcel is one that we have not utilized for any particular purpose over the years. We looked at it a couple of years ago as a potential compost location, but the cost of development for that operation is deemed to be too high. It is, I see that parcel as the perfect, um, location to construct a borrow area. And I'm asking for your approval of an overall bu- project budget of one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, a not-to-exceed project. Um, and one last point, Commissioner Tomlin, um, emailed me earlier wondering about the pieces and parts. There are a lot of pieces and parts to this. Um, there, we have consultants who are helping walk us through the mitigation. We have our onsite eng- engineers, CTI, who would do the design and development and instruction plans. We will bid out portions of constructions as necessary and, uh, as, as it deems prudent to do. Um, so we'll be spending this and doing this development over a number of years. But this one particular source, we believe, will provide all the clay soil we need for at least about ten years. And then, um, we think it's, uh, I think it's a worthwhile investment. So with that, um, I ask for your approval before and on to the full board.
Do we have a motion?
I have a question, if I could.
Let's have the motion first and then.
We already do.
We already do.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dunn.
Matt, what is your plans for the proposed borrow pit? What will be the finished product there?
Ultimately, yes. Um, at this point, I don't know. Um, I, I think what would likely happen is that we would create a water source and we would fence it off and probably not open that to recreation or fishing or anything like that. There is the potential to do that. And, and quite honestly, I'm getting up to speed on creation of these types of, essentially, a small lake. And what's involved with the permitting and, and what you can do and what you can't do. So it's certainly something that we'll look at during development. I know you can build these things and stock them and have to have a certain depth and you have to have certain features within them to, to support, you know, fish communities. Um, and then there's certain types of vegetation that go along that tube that you might have to plant. So we'll look at that as we go.
Okay.
But no good answer on the.
Nothing, nothing solid right now. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Matt?
Just a comment, Howard. You're fortunate you have property in the proximity to landfill. Um, you know, we obviously worked very closely with our landfill consultant and some of the, um, landfills don't have that luxury of. And it gets really, really expensive if you've got to start hauling dirt and then doing all those other things that you said. So, between that twenty acres over there, seventy-two, we, we've got more than substantial, um, you know, land to move down.
There's quite a difference between the projected cost to haul it in at three dollars and sixty-four cents versus using our own for sixty-four cents. Okay, uh, I guess, uh, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, the, uh, two thousand and nine local qualified energy conservation bond allocated later. Motion to send it to the full board?
Support.
We have it moved and supported. Uh, I know, uh, Commissioner Dunn had some questions. I'm not sure I answered it inside of fact.
I believe you did. Uh, maybe Mr. Tomlin could kind of just, I just didn't understand exactly what it was. It looks like something we received years ago and now we are giving back. I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman.
It isn't actual funding. It was, um, the ability to go out and bond for special types of projects resulting in, um, conserving energy. But then those bonds had to be repaid by the county as well. We, we never were able to find a source that would generate enough income to allow us to repay those bonds. So it was decided not to use. We actually notified the feds a number of years ago that we weren't going to use the funds. The reason this is in front of you today is, is Mr. Struck received a notice from the state of Michigan saying, hey, we need some kind of official action, um, so we can reallocate those, um, that bonding ability to some other community in Michigan that might be interested in using it. So you're being asked to take that formal action to satisfy state requirement.
That's, that's kind of the answer that Commissioner Hyde and I talked about before the meeting, so thank you.
No other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion carried. Uh, the Department of Natural Resources grant application for the Blue Water River Rock.
Good evening. Um, before you tonight, I'm asking for permission to, uh, submit a grant application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resource. Unlike, uh, the past several years where I paraded to you every year practically for an acquisition grant, uh, we don't have a acquisition project this year. We do have, uh, development of the interpretive walkway through the wetland as a development project. Consequently, uh, we're dealing with a lot more competition for a development grant with the DNR. Uh, the project is to build, uh, a boardwalk, some concrete walkway, and install a couple interpretive panels and a couple benches. The project has been designed, preliminary design, and permitted by the Corps of Engineers as part of the original wetland project. If the project sounds familiar, you approved this project last fall for a coastal zone management grant application. Each of those grants max, uh, max out at fifty thousand dollars, so that would only do half the project. So I'm going to, as many different sources to apply for grants to fund that project. In the case tonight, the two grant, uh, grant sources that I would like to apply to are both administered by the DNR under the same electronic grant application process. We would only get one or the other. We would not be able to get both. Uh, but the, uh, the project, hopefully, we'll hear positive news from the coastal zone management later this year and get one of these projects in between the two grants to be able to do the full boardwalk project.
Okay, now this is, uh, from Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund.
Uh, there's two pots of monies. One is the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, um, and one is the Recreation Passport Grant Program. The Recreation Passport Program is funded by the, uh, when you pay the extra dollars on your, uh, license, your state car registration, your license plate fee, part of that money goes into this grant program. The majority goes to support the state parks, but some of the money goes into this grant program. So, um, that program caps out as a maximum fifty thousand dollar grant. The Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Program, over the past several years, the Trust Fund Board has chosen to automatically fund grants under fifty thousand dollars. So, that's not a given, but I'm trying, again, to be strategic to target those pots of monies that we have the best chance of, uh, being awarded.
If, if we got, uh, the fifty thousand dollar grant, would we have to match that with our park and recreation millage?
Yes, yes. Each of these grants, uh, require a fifty percent local match.
Okay, any other questions for, um, Mark? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, we don't have a motion yet.
I'd move to send it to full board, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and second. Commissioner Tomlin, I don't know, he's second.
I got it.
Commissioner Tomlin. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion carried. Okay, the, um, Plains LPG proposed use of a pipeline.
I received some correspondence from, um, Senator Peter's office on this, and, um, I'm going to defer this over to Corporation Counsel. He knows a little bit, um, uh, probably knows a lot more about it than I do. So Gary, you want to just chime in?
Yeah, this was the thing that was in the free press.
Yeah, this was the thing that was in the free press, then hit the local paper about this pipeline that was ancient and supposedly going to get reused.
Nineteen eighteen, I believe.
Yeah, and then the, the reporter unfortunately stopped one call short of getting to the real story. And Tom Koenig and Randy Fernandez chased it down with planes and they said it was never their intention to use the pipeline. So it was kind of a following up on Dave Struck's Jetsons. It was sort of a rut role thing and I couldn't resist that. But anyways, the, so anyways, the, what Plains said is it was never their intention to reuse it or use it for any purpose. It was reclassifying the, the pipeline. But I think it, it really brought to light a bigger problem, which is how can the federal government get a request from a pipeline company that they think means that it would get used and not notify the local jurisdictions that might be impacted, especially when it's running under the river and it's, it's an ancient pipeline. They, they didn't tell anybody and they weren't about to tell anybody. So I know what Marysville's going to do is get looking into if there can't be some procedure set up to load, notify local jurisdictions, given the one that broke under the river in Grand Rapids and the one under the Straits and Mackinaw that everybody's pretty uptight about because of its condition. So they're going to be working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I will tell you, when we went to Enbridge, they replaced that pipeline in Marysville, however many years ago, five, six, however many. That had a little banana in it, I guess, for better lack of choice of words. It probably had been there originally, but Enbridge was under, obviously, a lot of pressure for the thing that they had over in Battle Creek. But they did, they spent time with us. We had meetings. They showed us what they were actually putting in and so on and so forth. They spent, Dave was probably even actually pre you guys being on the board, but they spent a lot of time with the public piece of it. I think to Gary's point, you know, no notice, so on and so forth, so, okay. More to come.
So this is essentially community information.
Yeah. We don't even need an item on...
Okay, any other questions for Gary? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report. I would entertain a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posnay. Motion carried. Other environmental public works matters? Seeing none. Information only? Seeing none. A motion to receive and file packet regarding environmental public works?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Howard, I need a TV timeout here, buddy.
Okay. We have a TV timeout to ways and means and we'll turn ways and means over to Mr. Rushing.
I'll go check and find out.
Called him today and said, come on.
You can't make fun of this.
You can't show up.
You can't remember him showing up here during the poll.
I remember.
I remember.
Protest.
This usually bears CS type.
Give me the bar, buddy.
Great call.
Anytime you guys got going, just...
Okay.
I got a CD in here.
Federal Energy Reg.
It's forward.
I showed that to Linda.
You didn't bring, oh, did you?
Oh, my God.
I'm running on the clock, I knew, by the way. I already started it.
I should warn you, I better not run again because I have to hang around with you.
I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order.
Hey, Carl, quit detaining our sheriff.
We're rolling, buddy.
You'll have to charge him sixty dollars.
The legal detention there?
You have the right to remain silent.
This time I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McConnell, Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here. All right, moving on to number two.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move two A and two B down to become seven C and seven D.
Can I have a motion? That is a motion. Can I have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. This time we'll move on to three, citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move to updates. Do we have any updates?
I'm ready.
Seeing none, conceptual initiatives? We have none. We have no old business, so we'll move to seven A, new business. District Court Manning Table Revision Request.
Good evening, everyone. As indicated by my, or reflected in my letter to the board, this is a request for a change in my Manning Table and the District Court Manning Table to reflect a deputy court administrator. Currently, I'm supervising over twenty employees in two separate locations, Marine City location and the Port Huron location. We're in the process of bringing and discussing different ideas for bringing a lot more newer services to the Marine City area. Additionally, with the supervision, supervision of staff in the two separate locations, this individual would be there in my absence. Currently, there is not any non-clerical supervision in the Marine City location. Often can create different issues. Me not being able to be in two spots at once, especially with bringing new services to that area and the amount of flow that goes through the Port Huron office, it, it does bring some difficulties as well. This is going to have another individual with some institutional knowledge for succession Any other, any questions regarding anything in the proposal I can answer?
Do we have any questions? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion? Okay, this is going to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay, we'll be moving on to seven B. Metroplon Pollockton, Planning Commission Manning Table Change.
The Planning Commission is also requesting a change to its Manning Table. As I outlined in the report, we are proposing to eliminate a currently vacant part-time secretary position, take the existing part-time Account Clerk Two position and move that to full-time. As I mentioned in, in my memo, this position basically handles all of the agenda packets and logistics for a number of the boards and commissions that the Metropolitan Planning Commission services, including the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Land Bank Authority, Ag Preservation Board. So from a standpoint of having, not having to juggle two part-time schedules and having a full-time support person to work with planning staff to, to handle these duties, I feel it's much more efficient for our, our department going forward. I worked with the Finance Director on this. As you can see, the, the overall impact is nine thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars to our budget and we are proposing to essentially rearrange a couple of line items in our budget to accommodate that change. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, we will move on to seven C, Park and Rec Manning Table Revision.
Good evening. We have recently, as of Monday morning, received a resignation from one of our park operations supervisors. So we appreciate that being put on the agenda tonight. With, with the vacancy and the pending warm weather that is around the corner, we're proposing to make a little change in our organizational chart and rather than fill the park operations supervisor position, convert that to a park manager position. This is based in part on a meeting I had with Commissioners Rushing, Graytop, and Bohm of wanting to see if we can survive with less supervisor and more worker, union workers that can, can actually do, do part of the work, unlike our supervisors. So there would be approximately a fourteen thousand dollar savings in wages at the, the benefits of the two positions would be the same. We, we have, I have talked to all my staff and it's going to necessitate the administrative duties that were done by that supervisor to be shared by a lot of people. Staff has been really forthcoming in saying, we, we think we can make a go of it. We don't know if it's going to work and that's why at the end of my memo, I suggest that we report back to you in six months to see if it works. We are involved in a lot of administrative things, but for a lot of reasons, we think this might work better with boots on the ground, so to speak. The second park manager position would be stationed out at Columbus and it would free up the supervisor that was supervising that park to supervise all the parks.
I would so move the Manning Table Change for Park and Rec.
Support.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Graytop.
Mark, looking at this, this gets off a little bit, but which one of your park managers will handle the Riverwalk area?
That is so miniscule. Probably the supervisor will just supervise it directly and then pull somebody in.
Okay.
We are blessed in that being a community foundation project, the Friends of the St. Clair River do a lot of volunteer work down there. So our, our responsibilities down there at this point are pretty minimal.
Okay.
The trail is paid, is plowed by Atchison Ventures. We've got all kinds of volunteers down there. So that was a good question.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add, we've got a fantastic park system and I think Mark does a great job and everybody going to know this. It's a big plus to our communities. Other than that, any other further discussion? All in favor, sending it to full board.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, moving on to seven D, Resolution sixteen oh six, ratifying quit parting agreement with St. Clair County Communications Officers, P O M.
Well, final action on that.
I thought, I was going to say, I thought it was for final action.
I'll, I'll move to the final action.
Second. Any discussion? We need a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyattman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here. I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes, here, I mean, sorry.
Yes. All right, it has passed. This time, do you have any other Ways and Means Matters?
David, I have, want to get you up to speed. I'm going to tag team this with Carl here. On February tenth, we've got the notice from Mr. Kaufman that he was going to be riding off into the sunset here on June first. So we set up a series of meetings. On February seventeenth and February eighteenth, I met with our elected officials. We went through the process last time and I've said this, you know, multiple times, you've heard me, when I reached out to the elected officials at that time and this was when Sean was leaving and I was becoming board chairman and, you know, I'd said essentially, is there anybody that in the organization that we should really be looking at? And everybody said Bill Kaufman, you know, at that time. So it was, you know, a fairly easy decision, I guess, back then for us. You know, perhaps a little bit different this time. Bill is leaving, meeting with the elected officials. If we could clone Bill Kaufman, we'd do it. And I mean, that was very apparent. And we kind of posed the question, do we go internally, do we go externally? And I think if you, and I know Tim Donlin's here and some of the others were part of that. Then we actually met on February twenty-sixth with our Blue Meets Green. I often talk about my Blue Meets Green group. There was probably a dozen of us at, at that particular meeting. Bill, you were there also.
Was.
You know, what direction do we go? I look at this position, you know, not just county administrator, but the, the collective buy-in from the elected officials from the outside community. This is, this is an important job and I think with all the collaboration that we've have, have really made strides in the last five years, having somebody, somebody in that position that essentially, you know, everybody or the majority of the people can buy into is, is a very important decision. I kind of tapped Carl on the shoulder. Many of you know that Carl has a lot of experience in this. He's done a lot of this work from his work with the MML. I had only been through it one time previous and like you said, it was relatively easy at that time. I'm going to turn it over a little bit to Carl as far as, just talk a little bit, I guess, Carl, process, so on and so forth.
Well, my, my, my recommendation is, first of all, is that we set a special meeting to, to discuss this issue. First of all, I, I sat in with Jeff and listened to the same comments. I was not involved in the process last time and it was, was very interesting and there seemed to be a consensus that we should be going internal, at least initially, and if we're not successful in finding a successful candidate at that point, then we could move through an external process. One of the things we have to keep in mind is Bill's leaving June first, so we, we really need to get started quickly if we intend to have an administrator that will overlap with, with Bill at, at the, at the conclusion of his employment.
We are involved in a lot of administrative things, but for a lot of reasons, we think this might work better with boots on the ground, so to speak. The second park manager position would be stationed out at Columbus, and it will free up the supervisor that was supervising that park to supervise all the parks.
I would so move the Manning Table Change for Park and Rec.
Support.
Any further discussion? Mr. Graytop.
Mark, looking at this, this gets off a little bit, but which one of your park managers will handle the Riverwalk area?
That is so miniscule. Probably the supervisor will just supervise it directly and then pull somebody in.
Okay.
We are blessed in that being a community foundation project, the Friends of the St. Clair River do a lot of volunteer work down there, so our responsibilities down there at this point are pretty minimal. The trail is plowed by Atchison Ventures. We've got all kinds of volunteers down there, so that was a good question.
No, thank you.
Just want to add, we've got a fantastic park system, and I think Mark does a great job, and everybody really knows that. It's a big plus to our communities. Other than that, any other further discussion? All in favor, sending it to full board.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, moving on to seventy, Resolution sixteen oh six, Ratifying Quit the Barding Agreement with St. Clair County Communications Officers, P.O.A.M.
Well, final action on that.
I thought I was going to say I thought it was for final action. I'll move to the final action.
Support.
Second, any discussion? We need a roll call on this, please.
Mr. Tomian.
Yes.
Mr. Heidemann.
Yes.
Mr. Bohm.
Here. I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Graytop.
Yes.
Mr. Graytop.
Yes, here, I mean, sorry.
Yes. All right, it has passed. This time, do you have any other Ways and Means Matters?
David and I have, want to get you up to speed. I'm going to tag team this with Carl here. On February tenth, we've got the notice from Mr. Kaufman that he was going to be riding off into the sunset here on June first. So we set up a series of meetings. On February seventeenth and February eighteenth, I met with our elected officials. We went through the process last time, and I've said this, you know, multiple times, you've heard me, when I reached out to the elected officials at that time, and this was when Sean was leaving and I was becoming board chairman, and, you know, I'd said essentially, is there anybody that in the organization that we should really be looking at? Everybody said Bill Kaufman, you know, at that time, so it was, you know, a fairly easy decision, I guess, back then for us. You know, perhaps a little bit different this time. Bill is leaving, meeting with the elected officials. If we could clone Bill Kaufman, we'd do it, and I mean, that was very apparent. And we kind of posed the question, do we go internally, do we go externally? And I think if you, and I know Tim Donlin's here and some of the others were part of that. Then we actually met on February twenty-sixth with our Blue Meets Green. I often talk about my Blue Meets Green group. There was probably a dozen of us at that particular meeting. Bill, you were there also.
I was.
You know, what direction do we go? I look at this position, you know, not just county administrator, but the collective buy-in from the elected officials from the outside community. This is, this is an important job, and I think with all the collaboration that we've have, have really made strides in the last five years, having somebody, somebody in that position that essentially, you know, everybody or the majority of the people can buy into is a very important decision. I kind of tapped Carl on the shoulder. Many of you know that Carl has a lot of experience in this. He's done a lot of this work from his work with the MML. I had only been through it one time previous, and like you said, it was relatively easy at that time. I'm going to turn it over a little bit to Carl as far as, just talk a little bit, I guess, Carl, process, so on and so forth.
Well, my, my recommendation is, first of all, is that we set a special meeting to discuss this issue. First of all, I sat in with Jeff and listened to the same comments. I was not involved in the process last time, and it was very interesting, and there seemed to be a consensus that we should be going internal, at least initially, and if we're not successful in finding a successful candidate at that point, then we could move through an external process. One of the things we have to keep in mind is Bill's leaving June first, so we really need to get started quickly if we intend to have an administrator that will overlap with Bill at the conclusion of his employment, so we can have a smooth transition. Otherwise, we're going to need to appoint an interim administrator while we, while we complete either the internal process or the longer external process. My suggestion to you is that to make it easy on everybody's schedule, that the meetings that we take place in the timeline that we develop coincide with our commissioner's schedule, and that we try and set the special meetings maybe, maybe just before this meeting. My recommendation would be that we set a meeting for five o'clock, our next meeting, which would be the fifteenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. And, and at that meeting, we would review the job description, existing job description that we have for Bill's position. We can discuss it. Like to hear from all the commissioners on what they think are desirable qualities for our next administrator. Try and finalize those so that we can come up with a position description that we can circulate. And then we also need to develop a specific timeline for the applications, the interviews, candidate selection, negotiation of a contract, and also to provide for a couple transition meetings, at least between, between Bill and his successor, so that we make sure that all the things that he's doing, that he can't complete, can be successfully handed off to a new candidate. So my recommendation is, is twofold tonight. First, that we set that initial meeting that I described earlier, and secondly, we really need to coordinate this effort with our human resource department. So I'd like the commission to appoint three commissioners to work with the human resource staff to develop the agenda materials, et cetera, for your upcoming meetings. And my thought was that Chairman Bohm, Vice Chair Graytop, and myself could be that committee, and we could prepare then the draft documents and bring them back to the full commission to make the decisions as we move through the process. Is there anything else, Jesse, you want me to cover?
No, I think that's good. Set a meeting for next two weeks on the seventeenth at five o'clock, and let's start the discussion. I think, you know, I personally have collected enough information from the elected officials from my others at Blue Meets Green that I so heavily rely on, kind of from taking some next steps. I know a lot of the, you know, commissioners, you know, I spoke to you, you know, regarding this, and it's good.
And one, one real advantage of the internal search is we can take advantage of the cities, the counties. It's hard to, when I get talking about this, talking about my previous experiences, mostly with cities and towns.
Just don't say Macomb County.
I, I, I promise. I promise. But we already have an internal software where we can post jobs and receive them and summarize the applications and everything, so that we won't have to wait a long period of time with an internal search to pull the trigger and require interested parties to submit their resumes and applications, so we can move on to, to the interviews.
I agree with your recommendation. We don't need any formal action for you three to be the committee, do we?
Just one comment. We handled the construction with our committee. We had three key people, and then we had an alternate. Do you think we need an alternate for this committee?
It would be a good idea. I would, I would suggest, Howard, the reason I just suggest Howard, because he's here in Port Huron, and we've had the last minute. We, one of us couldn't be there. He could easily fill in.
Agreed.
Do we have any other?
No, I just appreciate, Carl, you taking this on. I know arguably you have more experience than anybody at the county at this, so we're able to lean on you a little bit here, so.
I'm happy to help, but actually, county government is different than city and township government, and I think the first couple initial meetings that we had are going to be very helpful to all of us in deciding what our goals are going to be.
For the meeting that we want to have on three seventeen at five P.M., do we need a motion or any official action to that?
I'll just force that.
Okay. Do we have any other Ways and Means Matters? Seeing none, moving on to information only. Have none, can I have a motion for receiving file packets?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel Twelve every Wednesday night at nine P.M. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.